So call us to order at 6:01. And the first thing on the agenda, recognition of groups. So we do have Mary and Lyle with us. We have our soon to be new superintendent, Andy Skarzinski, with us. Andy, wave and say hi to everybody.
Hi, everybody. I'm thrilled to be here.
Um, we've got Scott Norrins with us. We've got Brian from BCTV, just keeping an eye out that I don't screw this up royally.
And Frank is supposed to be joining us soon as well.
Okay, good. All right, so Clerk's Report. We have the minutes of April 13th. Would someone like to move the minutes?
Yeah, Carrie, this is Chad. I read the minutes and they look good to me. I'd like to move a week's at the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Mrs. Hannah, I'll second.
Any questions, concerns, critiques? They looked good to me. All right. All those in favor of passing the minutes of April 13th, say aye. Any opposed or extensions? Okay, minutes are passed. Communications. I don't believe I have had any. Has anyone else had any communications or anything we need to know about Mary or Lyle? Nope. Okay, moving on to finance. Would someone like to move the warrants? Did I, yes, everyone got the warrants. I confirmed with, it was an email glitch, but I did follow up. So I think everyone got them. So would someone like to move the warrants?
Hey, Carrie's chat, I'll move the warrants.
Is there a second? Oh, second. To do that off. Oh, second. Any questions, any concerns, any things we need clarification on? Okay. All those in passing the warrants as moved, say aye.
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 Any opposed or extensions? Okay, hearing none, that's done. Finance, I'm sure we're gonna, when Frank gets on, we'll let him talk to us about where we're at. So I don't think the SU has had a meeting. I think we're good on SUSD negotiations, Lyle? That's on our agenda. I feel like that's done. Okay.
That should be all done.
Okay, I will get that off for the next one. So I think we're moving right into administrative report. So Lyle, you want to go?
Actually, am I unmuted? Yes. Mary and I are doing a joint report. Because I took so long last time, Mary is going to start this time and I'll just fill in at the end.
Thanks, Lyle.
You do care well.
We try to share.
We do. So good evening, evening, everybody. I hope you're doing well on this rainy and nasty day. Maybe the snow will turn things into flowers. I'm gonna do a, I'm gonna do a screen share if that would be okay? Because I kind of wrote up a few things and it might be easier to read and listen. So bear with me just one second.
Okay.
Okay. So first thing, I think, I'm gonna kind of go in reverse order. So kind of starting right here. Classroom teachers right now, meeting with students via Zoom, meeting with students in full groups and small groups. Some teachers are recording videos for students to watch at a time that's convenient for the families. Meeting with parents, touching base with parents. And in addition to what the classroom teachers are doing, we have private band lessons going. We have an all school sing happening. Individuals working with guidance counselor, behavior interventionist, PE art lessons, library resources have been provided for teachers. For example, Audible is doing a free thing right now for students. And Epic is another thing that's doing some, providing some free resources for students right now. Special education teachers are working with distance learning plans that have been created while we're doing remote learning tied to IEP goals. They're doing, I participated in an IEP meeting today. And our special education teachers are becoming really facile with making those, I think, as comfortable as possible and as similar to the real thing as possible, which I appreciate their work. Our nurse and our, one of a member of our custodial staff are helping out over at Oak Grove School because they're doing childcare right now. And we found out today from John Sessions, the assistant principal over at Academy School, who's working very hard with a team over there, which includes Vernon staff, to distribute meals that, over 3,000 meals, including dinner, are being distributed per day, which is incredible. Lots of work from our custodial staff, hardworking four-member staff. They are doing vigorous cleaning, but also kind of starting on some sort of summer projects, moving bleachers, painting way up high in the gym, being very safe. And then going up to the top, wanted to talk to you about attendance a little bit. I think the, our partner board had asked for some information about, you know, families that we're reaching. So I'm right up here, right now, out of 357, there are zero families that we have not heard from or been in touch with at all. No radio silence, so to speak. Last week, there were about six students that we've been in touch with. The kids and the families trying to support families to get child, children to complete their work. And sort of, you know, there's a, there's a story behind each one. But basically, I want you to know as a board that classroom teachers, in some cases, special educators, Jamie Carter, guidance counselor, various other staff members, including myself, are in touch with families saying, you know, what do you need? What, what support would be helpful? One of the resources that's been nice is Paul Smith and Gary Parsick. And Adrian Lapierre?
Lapierre.
Lapierre, thank you. I've never met Adrian. They're doing, they put together a helpline, kind of a tech-based hotline for families. If the technology is wonky, and I've had some good feedback from, I think, three different families, that that helpline has been really useful for them and met their needs. And so 150 out of 157 are engaging with work regularly, in constant communication and contact with their teachers. So I will be sending out, I've been trying to do kind of a weekly robocall to not overwhelm folks. And one of the things I'm gonna send out on the robocall is sort of a new protocol for attendance that, you know, we, we want to hear from you. If it's been three days or so and no one at the school has heard from you and we've kind of reached out, folks are gonna contact Jamie Carter, guidance counselor, and say, you know, hey, can you give a call? And if she still doesn't hear, you know, I will try to reach out to one or both of us. Basically, at some point, probably after about four days, you know, we may reach out to the Wyndham Sheriff's Office to do a Well Child, just to, you know, be checking in on families like we can't do when the kids are, we can't do visually, like when they come to school. So the intent there is to make sure we're, you know, knowing that kids are safe, not to be intrusive. And the Wyndham County Sheriff's Office is very supportive and kind of knows those calls might be coming. But like I said, we've been in touch with all the families. I don't anticipate that being something that we will go to, but I just want to give families adds up about that. We'll talk a little bit about budget, I know when Frank comes, but basically, to kind of name the elephant in the room, you know, our budget has passed. The other schools' budgets haven't passed. And we know that there are going to be folks who are really challenged with paying tax bills with everything going on, and we're aware of that. So I am putting the part-time Spanish position and the permanent subposition on hold for now. And I'm gonna kind of communicate to the staff that, you know, we'll probably be looking for ways to trim the 2021 budget, even though it has been approved, so that potentially we can apply that money to the fund balance and use that in the 21, 22, in case, passing a budget is challenging in case tax revenues are down. But, you know, I hear from staff pretty regularly, you know, have you heard anything about being furloughed or laid off? And I'm letting folks know that, you know, sort of when I know, you'll know, but that I don't anticipate reductions in force at Vernon for next year at this point. It's kind of what I want to communicate to the faculty on Wednesday when we do our weekly staff meeting. And Andrew, nice to meet you. I haven't met you yet. So this is kind of a funny way to meet, but at some point down the road, if you would like to meet with me or hear a little bit about Vernon or attend one of our faculty meetings at some point this year, we'd be happy to have you.
I would love to do somewhere. It's a pleasure to meet you.
Thanks. That's me. I'll kick it over to you, Lyle.
All right, thanks. So just thinking a little-
Do you want me to keep sharing? Sorry.
It's okay. I, I know what I had in there. But to follow up with the budget and contracts, though Vernon has passed a budget, we have not sent out contracts to Vernon teachers because they're part of the WSESU negotiated agreement. So no contracts are going to be sent out for probably mid-May earliest, until we have a better handle on what we may end up with for a budget. So just so that you know, in case you start to get questions about contracts and where contracts are. The other piece of my report is just around diversity day. Normally, diversity day would have been this coming Friday. This year, we're doing diversity activities throughout the month of May. The WSESU Diversity Equity Committee meets pretty regularly. And right now, they have quite a nice option, quite a nice diverse option of activities for students, parents, families. One of those is going to be a panel with, hopefully, and Mike Sostak setting this up, hopefully run by students that will include a physician's assistant, they're trying to get a custodian, a teacher, students, and how the virus is affecting them and what their life is like now under the virus. They have, actually, they being Michaela Sims, has organized a session, Vanessa, I'm gonna remember her last name, it's in the notes, who is a climate activist. And she's going to be doing a session that students can jump onto. And she actually has, her last session, I guess, was with Jane Fonda. So her next session is with us, so we're feeling pretty important. Though, of course, you know, Jane Fonda has, has some connection to our area. Her daughter lives in Putney, I believe. So, so we're, the diversity committee is putting together books that will be sent out to students across the SU. Ellen Tumaviskas, the art teacher in Putney, has put together a coloring page for younger students. So that with some crayons will be sent likely through the lunch delivery system. But we're still working out some of the details around that. So instead of a diversity day, it'll be diversity month. So look for opportunities throughout the month. And I think that's it for me.
Any questions for Lyle or Mary?
Yeah, Carrie, this is Chad. Question for Mary. I mean, this is obviously an incredible inconveniences in the world, just, just where we're sitting. But what can we, is there anything as a board that we can do to help out the situation? Is there opportunities you've seen presented themselves, or just thinking something that we could, we could do?
You know, I think, I've been kind of thinking with Teacher Appreciation Week coming up in the month of May, next month. You know, maybe something in the way of even just like a note or an email, some kind of message from the board that just says, you know, I've been telling teachers that every, truly, everything I'm hearing from families is really positive feedback. And sometimes they say, oh, really? You know, because they're sort of critical of themselves and wanting to do their very best work. And, and I'm saying, yes, everything I'm hearing is so, so overwhelming and positive. So maybe just some more positive feedback, you know? Like if you're a parent right now of a Vernon elementary student, how, you know, how their kid is feeling, how your kid is feeling, you know what I mean? Because of their teacher or, you know, just kind of a little, keep, keep up the good work kind of thing, I think would probably be well received.
Okay, can do, thank you.
Yeah, I have to say, what's strange about this whole thing is the one place I used to connect with people on the school board stuff, and it used to drive me crazy, is the grocery store.
Yeah.
And now you don't have that anymore. You, you, because you can't tell who anybody is because you're all wearing masks and you're in and out so fast. But I, I actually miss being-
You miss it, yeah.
I miss being accosted in the grocery store. This is so sad. But that's where I would see people and feel like you had that connection and we don't have it. So I like that idea. If we could all just email or call a teacher we know and just say, thank you.
I'm sure it would be well received. And I did hear, you know, I heard from one teacher today. I'll never forget, you know, we had kind of our quick staff meeting after we found out about the governor's order and that it was going to be the entire school year. And I mean, it was just, you know, everybody's in tears and it was awful. And so I kind of have that point from now to this point, you know, coming back the day after a break. And a teacher said to me today, you know, I'm really starting to feel like I've got my feet under me and I'm starting to settle in. I'm starting to feel a little bit comfortable with this. You know, I don't want it, I hate it, but a little comfortable. And so I think, I think that that feeling is, is starting to happen for some. And so, yeah, I think just any, keep up the good work, you've got this, the sun will start shining sometime, would be helpful.
Now, it's probably too soon to talk about this, but it's gonna hit us fast, probably. Oh, Carrie's waiting to get in.
Yeah, sorry. I was gonna interrupt. She just texted me and said, I'm waiting.
Sorry, Carrie. Sorry, late. I gotta, I gotta learn to look at the thing. I'm learning, I'm learning. We're getting there. So Carrie, we're talking with Lyle and Mary just about what we can do as a board, being more out of touch than normal to support the teachers. So the recommendation was really just to reach out to any teacher you are in contact with and say, thank you. You know, we, we got your back here. And, oh, so I, then I was trying to think ahead. What do we do for the end of the year? What do we do for graduation? What do we do for retiring teachers? It's gonna be so different and weird and-
Yeah.
So at this time, the Dan French, the, from the Agency of Ed, has said that on May 8th, by May 8th, he will be announcing end of year sort of guidelines for graduations, end of year celebrations, that type of thing. So we've still got a couple more weeks, but the Agency of Ed is supposed to be putting out those guidelines for us. I worry about seniors. I know, you know, sixth graders are moving up to BAMS or to wherever they've decided to go. But I worry about seniors who are leaving and going on, leaving the area, many of them possibly. And for them not to have closure, that's, that's very sad. So that's, hopefully, on 8th, we'll have some more definitive information. I still have not heard that we would not be doing 175 days, school days. So our school year will likely end pretty close to whatever it was going to, somewhere in the middle of June. So.
Okay. And then the only other issue I've heard is some parents who have been very happy with us, with Mary, with Lyle, with teachers and all of that, but just a concern for the future. And it's almost more of a concern for what's gonna happen to my kid next year when they move up? Are they gonna be behind? And, you know, parents who are trying to do the best they can, but some parents are still working and trying to juggle teach. I, I'm lucky, I got middle schoolers and a senior. So my kids can go off and do their own thing and I'm pretty sure they're getting it done. But I don't know how Hannah and Carrie, you guys are handling, Chad, you guys are handling elementary school kids and keeping them on task. And so I think there's that, that guilt of the parent of, is my kid gonna be behind next year?
Yeah. Parents should not feel guilty. Parents aren't educators. And when we come back in the fall, and Andy, this is gonna be more on you than on me. We are going to be, we're already making plans and, and Andy's joining a central office meeting tomorrow. And that's one of our topics. So when are we gonna start planning and looking ahead to how we're assessing kids when they come back? So we know what it is that they're going to need, how we're really meeting their social emotional needs? Because we know for people that have, kids that have been out of school for five and a half months, not with their friends, they're going to need to come back into a really strong community. And one of the things that we need to be careful about when we're making any sort of reductions due to budgets is the fact that our students are going to come in on such a different range of abilities and what they've been able to accomplish in the last five and a half months. So we have to make sure that we're still providing strong teachers with academic coaches, good curriculum. So that's, all of those things will be, we'll be talking about over the next few weeks.
Yeah.
Hannah, you've got a question?
No, that my hand was raised a long time ago, like, Carrie.
Are you gonna, you gotta learn how to unshut your hand.
He's here.
I'm gonna lower your hand for you. So other questions before we maybe see if Frank wants to talk budget? And this is gonna be scary.
Well, before Frank's scary, I just want to add one more, just reiterate what, Frank isn't scary. I just wanted to reiterate one more thing, similar to what Lyle said. You know, I've probably said it at least 50 times to different parents that, no, like, the analogy I use is nobody's gonna crack the first page of the third grade textbook and say, go. Like, our, our teachers are highly skilled at working together on teams, even if they're a grade level where there's only one of them and, you know, differentiating work and tapping all the resources that we're lucky to have to meet the needs of kids because 15 different learners, you know, exist in a classroom. So I think, you know, teachers will be ready for it. And I just encourage parents to not sweat it, like, love them up and we'll get them in the fall, you know?
Okay. It's a hard conversation to have because they, like, these, they're so well-meaning. And I think they, they really are taking it on themselves. And it's, it is trying to convince them, your kid's gonna be okay, just hang in there.
And reach out if there's something the school can do for you as the grownups.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Frank, you wanna tell us what you might know and what we might not want to know?
You're muted, Frank.
I can unmute, I think. I never know. It's like, I'm always worried if I do it, is he about, oh, there he goes, he's good.
We get it, okay, yeah. I was, I was in a few different applications. I couldn't find the Zoom group, but hello, everybody. Yeah, so I, you know, I'm, I'm the messenger on this one. I'm not the spokesperson for the great state of Vermont. So I keep that in mind. And also, there, you know, everything is developing every day. So what I thought I would share with you is, you may have seen it in various web sources. I'm gonna pick on the Mark Peralt's two brief that he presented to the legislature. It's probably been two weeks now. It, if I could kind of quickly go over the highlights of that real, you know, briefly, and then we could talk about any questions we might have. But have, has anyone seen a sort of synopsis of the, the Joint Fiscal Office update to the legislature?
Did I send that to you guys? I can't remember if I emailed the video link for what it was. It's, it's worth a watch. It's scary, but it's worth a watch.
Okay. So I won't, I won't go into the detail. I'll just look at the first page here with you. I assume you can see the document? Okay. You know, in summary, obviously, with the loss of the major sources of, you know, revenue that goes into the Ed Fund, there's a big, big deficit. They're estimating for the current fiscal year, you see right there, the first paragraph, 89,000, I'm sorry, 89 million. I did hear from Brad James at a business manager meeting a week ago that actually, that's been reduced a little bit, actually quite a bit, because there were more revenues in March than originally thought. So it looks like they're looking at more like 69 million. But it's still obviously a very unfavorable development. That's for the revenue shortfall. Fortunately, the state of Vermont has had some reserves in its education fund, you know, much like Vernon School District has in your own education fund. So that's gonna carry most of the burden for fiscal year 20. There's, they're still projecting some sort of a education fund shortfall. It's unclear how the Federal Cares Act is going to be, you know, filtered through, you know, Vermont's education's funding system. That's 30 million. On the surface, what we're being told is that, because Vermont is sort of one of a kind in the nation as it relates to school funding, the supervisory union is the LEA, and that's the entity that the funding will go through. So as we learn more about what that means, we can share that with you. At a very summary level, what, well, Joint Fiscal, in this article here, you can see this brief refers to it. But Brad James, again, has indicated that that may look like something similar to our Title I allocations. So, you know, for the supervisory union, it could be nearly a million dollars of, through the Federal Cares Act. So those are some, those are some little, little bit of relief points in a very difficult-looking environment. As both Mary and Lyle have noted, the big concern, and as you go, if you look at this document, you'll see that in, in pretty much every place, no one really has a good estimate for fiscal year 21. Meaning, you know, to what extent will the rooms and meals tax and the sales tax and the other sort of sources of funds that pay for so much of the Ed Fund? To what extent will we start to see that activity, economic activity resume? You know, we just don't know. We don't even have a clear date from the governor as to when we're, you know, when we think it's safe to fully engage. So to, you know, again, to Mary and Lyle's point about the current fiscal year and then preparing for next fiscal year, you may recall, we, we did schedule 270,000 of our surplus in FY '21 budget as a, you know, as an offset to taxes. And to whatever extent we can mitigate that, you know, not spend it, as Mary's already started to consider, you know, with the new program, the subposition, that's gonna be, that's gonna be prudent of the school board, of the administration to, you know, you know, be careful about how we utilize resources. We always are, but in this environment, it's going to be, until we have a clearer picture of when economic activity starts up again in Vermont and to what extent will the, the Ed Fund come back to a, you know, more normal level, we, we should do everything we can to manage our reserves so that we can, you know, sort of smooth out the programs and avoid having our fifth and sixth graders say, take the worst of maybe a three-year cycle. You know, we want to try to even out programs as best we can. You know, we wanna try to even out programs as best we can. So here's a, here's Mark Peralt's summary. Maybe a couple of other things that I didn't mention, most of the taxes have been paid in the state of Vermont, the, that prop, school property taxes. Vernon does have a payment due, you know, as residents coming up in just a couple of weeks, or maybe it's next week. The, the concern there, you, you know, you may have heard a bunch of speculation about, well, how are towns gonna be able to pay when, when residents are, you know, being laid off and facing these really severe circumstances? The, the legislature has wrestled with a number of school funding issues, but one of the things that they are not doing, that I am aware of, is changing the town's obligation to pay the school within the twenty days of school property taxes due. So what that has always meant for probably a hundred years is that if a resident of Vernon has not paid their school property taxes by the due date, it's the town's obligation to borrow that funds, those funds, pay the school and address, you know, delinquent property tax issues again through existing statutes. Hopefully, we see some other mechanisms that provide, you know, both the town and the resident some, some relief from, you know, the, the really difficult circumstances we're in. But from a cash flow point of view and from a business operations point of view, the Vernon School District should be in stable financial condition through the end of this fiscal year. And because we do have a very solid fund balance, you know, starting the new fiscal year, you know, we'll be, we'll be in reasonable shape. But again, we need to wait for the update before we make those commitments like Lyle, Lyle was saying, particularly, you know, a hundred percent of your employment contracts, that's just, that's, that's obviously where most of the money is in terms of spending. So we want to be careful about that. Maybe one last thing I'll mention is typically it's now that the state, the legislature has, has set the income yield. So that's this last point that you see on the, on the document I'm sharing here. And, you know, at this point, they just, they're saying, we just don't know what to do in, in the, in the event of, you know, no clarity around revenue. So unfortunately, that might mean that we do see a delay in the property tax bills being issued. You know, I, it's only a probability, I can't tell you if that's actually gonna happen or not. But it, you know, Mark Peralt from the Joint Fiscal Office is raising that as a likely scenario. And obviously, that has more consequences for the town's cash flow, right? If they don't issue property taxes, the folks that can pay aren't gonna pay. But again, the school district should be, you know, insulated from, from that initially anyways. Another, another, you know, I don't, I don't know, I wouldn't call it a bright spot, but it's something that I've heard that the legislature is considering. And that is, I think I'll, I'll stop the share on the document. But as far as, you know, when we look at fiscal year twenty-one and then fiscal year twenty-two, we know twenty-one is totally unknown, twenty-two is, you know, is, it just seems no chance that it's not going to be particularly, you know, it's not gonna be normal, it's gonna be difficult. And one thing that's being considered, I don't think it's a bill yet, but you may have heard of it, I, I would hope that it gets more support. The idea of the state borrowing over a three or maybe a five-year period so that fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two is, are not just totally hammered in terms of cutting educational programs statewide, but that, 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 there's a mechanism, much like when we build buildings and we, you know, engage in a bond borrowing, we spread the cost over multiple years. That's being considered, I hope it gets more traction because I think that is a way to sort of stabilize the way we invest in programs, the way we engage our kids and our families and our, you know, employer teachers. So we'll, we'll, you know, just have to keep an eye on that. It's been very, very, you know, encouraging to see the level of advocacy that school board members, I know Lyle, you know, myself, many administrators have been engaging in with the, with our legislators, both locally and at the House Education Committee, the Senate Education Committee. So a lot of folks are really helping the legislators understand the challenges, the concerns, the fears, you know, and, you know, policy implications of the various things that are being discussed. So there's a lot being done on behalf of public ed and, you know, I compliment the school board members that have been engaged in that and certainly, certainly Lyle, Lyle's been sort of just unrelenting in, in trying to, to help, help steer us through this. So we're, we're doing the best we can.
So members, any questions? I mean, I think if I want to summarize, tell me if I got this right. It sounds like we in Vernon are in the lucky position of at least having a budget. But Mary is going to work to spend every dime prudently so that maybe we don't have to spend all that we did budget because going into next year, it's gonna start getting really tough. And if we don't have to spend that reserve money, if we can walk out of this year with more reserve money, we're in a better position for the upcoming years. But it sounds like it's also too early to tell based on what the state is saying yet, as to where we're gonna be.
It's a good summary, maybe to put it into numbers, if, if you were looking at your annual report, I know you're not now, but you would see in our summary page that we had about five-hundred-thousand in, in a projected ending fund balance as we start fiscal year twenty-one. And then we were gonna use two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand of that, that's the number I had mentioned, which would leave us about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to go into fiscal year twenty-two. So that's the number that you're, we're all talking about. The, the more we can retain of, you know, the two-fifty, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand as opposed to maybe three or four-hundred-thousand, you know, the better will be for sustaining programs.
Questions for Frank? Chad, you got a question?
No, I, I don't have a question, I, I was gonna ask, actually ask the information he's provided, so I wanna say, well done Frank. Our fund balance was gonna be walking into twenty-one, but you got, you answered.
Okay, oh, and, and I was talking about the general fund, by the way, the, the capital fund. In addition to that, the capital fund has six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. And, you know, again, we know we have a number of capital improvements in, under, under, you know, these kind of extreme circumstances, it might be the one where we consider asking, you know, it would be through an article on a public vote, but we consider asking the town to repurpose what has previously been restricted. That is the only way that you can repurpose a reserve is by an article on a warning for the electorate. But hopefully, we don't come to that. But, but it is, again, a, you know, a good financial position to start the year with.
And I was gonna ask that question also Frank, so basically, if we wanted to, if we, if it said, hey, you don't really need that capital fund money to, to offset for the taxpayers, we could potentially write a, have an article at the town meeting in the next March.
That's right.
About doing that, yep, okay.
All right, it's, I liked, I didn't realize that, so I'm glad there's another lever we might be able to pull if we need to. I, I do feel like it's still so early to tell. And I, I haven't sensed anything with the town yet, so I'm hoping it stays that way. I am worried about that first payment, or I'm probably less worried about the payment in May. I'm more worried about the first payment next year. Will, what, what's gonna come into the town coffers and what might they have to borrow? And that could, that could be tough.
Yeah, that's where there's just the growing uncertainty that we are all facing, yeah, yeah, we're, we're very concerned about that.
Okay. All right, anything else for Frank? All right. So I don't think we've got any unfinished business, but there's something I just want to bring to everyone's attention. So normally, we do the Steenbruggen Scholarship. So I was hoping to advertise it this year and get it out there that it's open, but then I stupidly opened my own 401K at the end of March and saw that like fifteen percent just went away with the wind. And I realized the Steenbruggen is based on, I think, earnings for the previous year, so I'm not sure there are going to be any. So I talked to, is it Laura at the central office, who am I dealing? Laura, and she's working with Sally to see if there actually will be any money to give away. At this point, we think there might just be a little bit. So we might still be able to do that scholarship, but it's probably not gonna be what it was last year. But, so at that point, I said, let's not advertise because it seems crazy to advertise and then say, oops, sorry, there is no money to give. But we will see where that comes back. So then we've got the Code of Ethics, I think, and I meant to look this up. I think we're required as a board to sign a Code of Ethics, is that in statute? All right, Lyle's shaking her head, so I think it is, I think we have to do this. So I'm gonna email you guys a Code of Ethics and then we can put it on our next agenda. And how in the world we're gonna sign it, I have no clue. I can mail it to you or something, if we all just say we signed it. But I will email that to you guys, so we at least can stay somewhat compliant.
Does it have to be physical signatures, Carrie?
I don't know, I'll ask, I don't know if that's.
It has been in the past. I think if, if you put it on the agenda after you've all had a chance to read it, discuss it, and then if you can all agree to it verbally, it'll be in the minutes that you've all agreed to it. And then when you finally get a chance to sign it, people can sign it and we'll be good.
Yeah.
There, there's a very easy option on Adobe Sign that, sorry. There's a very easy way to do it through Adobe where you just email it around and everybody just clicks and signs and it puts a date and it tracks when everybody did it, so that's an option and I'd be happy to help with that if needed.
Oh, you might be our go-to person on that, so.
Do it all the time for work, so.
Um, all right, anything else? I think I've gone through all my scribbles, I guess next meetings. So May eleventh would technically be our next meeting, as would May twenty-fifth, but I believe May twenty-fifth is Memorial Day, does, do people care? I know one day runs into the next now. We could do May eleventh and then we could do either May twenty-fifth or we could push it off to June first and figure out what we're doing in June. I guess the real question is, Lyle, Mary, Frank, what do you guys see on the horizon that we need to be around for, be aware of?
Well, maybe by May eleven, we'll have some more information on end-of-year celebrations, so you can think about that. I can bring that to you on May eleventh and, and we could wait and decide on May, another May date if we need one after a meeting on the eleventh. Because you have a budget passed, I don't see that as needing a lot more discussion. Mary, do you feel like there are things coming up that?
Yeah, I don't have anything that's real urgent on my mind, thinking between now and the end of the year. I have a lot of things that are urgently on my mind. Yeah, I don't think that scheduling to, yeah, I, I think May eleventh and then we go from there is fine.
We'll see if we need another.
And if there are other folks who have busier schedules.
Okay, well, why don't we start with May eleventh and we can decide then what we want to do for the next one?
Who knows what we'll be doing on Memorial Day, maybe we'll have everything lifted and we'll all be out running around doing something fun.
Anyone have anything else? Andy, thank you for joining us, this must be a strange introduction to things, but.
Well, no, thank you for having me, I'm thrilled, either, either way, it is a bit of a bizarre introduction to the, to the district, but
Well, I like to.
We're all in the same place.
We're the fun board, we're, we're the easy board.
Carrie?
Yes?
Just, I, I don't think it's any, a, a specific action, I just want to throw out, we don't normally have to borrow in anticipation of taxes, you know, but it is a very common practice. It's, you know, a tax anticipation note, so I just want to mention it, it's something that, you know, given the uncertainty about the road ahead, I just want you to, you be aware that it may be something that we have to consider. Seems unlikely in Vernon, particularly given the reserves we just talked about. But if the town, you know, changes their collection dates or if there's something unusual about the way the legislature issues tax, you know, the tax rates to the select board, you know, it's something that I just wanted you to be aware, I may be bringing up. It seems to me if it was an issue, it wouldn't be until the June meeting that we would need board action.
Okay, now, we had to do this, if my memory serves, two years ago, or it was when Vernon changed their tax collection system because they were spaced differently, all of a sudden, we weren't getting the Ed payment we were used to and therefore we had to borrow and you, you talked us all through it and it was, we're having to borrow, but we're about to get a huge check, it'll be okay. So it sounds like that's what you're talking about.
That's what it's, it's that kind of thing, it's, it's purely a cash flow issue, it's nothing to do with, you know, a deficit or, or it's, it's just, it's really a statutory kind of thing, yeah.
And now you got me thinking of one more thing, and I don't know if this is you, Mary or Lyle, but how are we doing right now on the current fiscal year, given that I am sure, I, I don't know, do we have a lot of extra expenses from, we're sending packets out to everybody, we're, how's the food service working? Is that gonna hit us or are we okay for that?
I think everything's so different right now, it's hard to get a really clear read forecasting between now and the end of the fiscal year. But because some things are more expensive, but sub-costs are way down, building use costs are way down. So I think we'll be okay, and I think we're being fiscally prudent, except for buying some things that we know we'll need for next year, math workbooks, that kind of thing, for example. So I think that I, I don't anticipate a huge change one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree, knowing that the governor, you know, requested all, all contracted employees, you know, through the school systems to be paid their normal contracted rates, you know, that really locked down the majority of the budgets through the end of the year. So as Mary said, where there are discretionary changes, you know, there, there are smaller, a much smaller portion of the budget. But, so we, we should be, we should be on track, certainly with the elementary school and, and maybe a little bit favorable.
Okay, okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, and maybe, maybe this isn't the time or place to ask this, so this might be a down-the-road question, but I am curious about the implication of the rec and their rental fee for our facility and how that all plays out with their decrease in revenue from their preschoolers. with their decrease in revenue from their preschoolers since, since that's all paid per month. I'm just sort of, and I don't know if that's a question I should be asking Frank now, or if we just want to talk about it later, but I know there's a trickle down thing that's a little unique to our school that they don't have other places.
Yeah, yeah, it's something that we, we want to understand. Um, it, it, it really has to do, you know, with a budget implication and the way it affects the tax rate. I did talk with Seth, um, uh, sort of informally about the analysis, uh, you know, in, in terms of whether we should collect the, the two hundred uh, and something thousand at all, you know, from the, from the Vernon taxpayers' point of view. Um, so, yeah, we, I don't think we have what we need this evening to really analyze that, but it's a very good topic for conversation, I would think. You know, uh, if we have an August meeting, it's, it's, that would be a good time to, to understand that and/or if there are any kind of contract implications with private providers, um, those usually come up in July, actually. So it would, it wouldn't be too, you know, too early to start talking about that in June.
Um, well, and I, I would guess too, at that juncture, that they would have a better sense, um, about whether or not they were going to be opening the pool and they were going to have any other outside funding streams that they typically rely on as well. So I just, I see all those layers and I, and I can't even wrap my head around it.
Yeah, there are a lot. Yeah, with the, the Act one sixty-six, there's a lot of, um, you know, uh, components to that.
Okay. Other questions? That's a complicated one because I still have not wrapped my head around how it actually works. So to pull the rug out from under makes it even more complicated.
Maybe, maybe just a, a quick, you know, summary on the concept and Andrew, I don't know to what extent you've read, uh, or, or are familiar at the elementary level with with, uh, the Act two one sixty-six, but on a, on a very macro level for Vernon or any district, we, we just, we know that we, we start from a place where for every, uh, child that accesses the, uh, certified program, the school district is obligated to pay, you know, about thirty-four, thirty-five hundred dollars per child. And, and then you go from there, you know, and, and when I say go from there, I mean, do you, does the school district employ their own, uh, early educator? Does the school district do what Vernon does, which is uh, host a pro, a program that's a third party? Or does the school district pay a private provider? Uh, you know, one, two, or maybe, maybe six or seven private providers, but it all starts from Act one sixty-six saying that for any child that wants to access, um, the, uh, certified preschool ten-hour-a-week program, the school district is obligated, you know, to budget and to pay, um, that approximately thirty-five hundred per, per child per year.
This will get fun next year.
Yes, thanks for that overview, Frank.
Sure.
Um, all right. Anything else? Wow, we're doing these in record time. We might have to zoom more often.
We're way more fun in person.
Yeah. Especially when Hannah and Chad get together. That's always.
It's always good with Hannah Bakes as well. I have to.
Oh, that's true. I am missing that a lot. Huh?
I said before she leave.
Please. Thank you.
All right. Well, if someone would like to move, that we adjourn.
Just Chad, I, I'd like to move that.
All right. And do we have a second?
All second.
Okay. Thank you, Hannah. All right. All those in favor? I? Any opposed? Seeing none, we are adjourned at six fifty-six. Thank you, guys. So we'll meet again on the eleventh of May and I will send you the code of ethics. That's on my list.